Hello, everyone. I'd like to call the Select Board meeting of October 3rd to order. We are starting at 5:00 and we have no private meeting tonight, executive session, so we are here to begin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the general public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present, and our health workers. Thank you very much. Please be seated.
Please, please, please.
Okay.
Silence, sign the warrant.
We have signed the warrant. We had a great moment of silence. Well done, everyone. Thank you. And we're first order of business is the appointment to the Youth Commission, Pamela Schwartz. Is she here?
Come on up.
Right there. If you just introduce yourself and we got a beautiful write-up on you, but let everybody know who you are, okay?
All right. Hi, I'm Pam Schwartz. I'm a resident. I moved back three years ago and I grew up here in Dartmouth.
And?
Excuse me, you're Larry's daughter?
Yes, and Larry's daughter.
Yes.
You know your parents very well.
Anybody have any question? Your resume, I think, speaks for itself and we are thrilled and honored that you want to join. It's a great group and you have a great leader.
And Dolores is wonderful, so.
She is. Any questions or comments?
Move to a point.
A motion? A motion.
Move to a point.
Second.
Any questions, comments from here? Is Mr. Gracie out there?
Yes, Frank.
Mr. Gracie?
No, he's not here today.
Not at all?
I don't think so.
Okay, so there's four of us voting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Absolutely unanimous. We thank you for your service.
Good luck and thank you.
And we'll be getting reports back from Dolores on a regular basis because she's doing great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Next. A continuance from a 621A on 1157 Russell Mills Road. Anybody here? I think there is. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
I'm David Fentress and I'm, for as long as my wife, own the property that we're, has been under the protection of 621A and we're selling part of it. And that's what we're seeking, the decision to not exercise the right of first refusal by the town.
And we've received all documents from all pertinent towns and commissions that the interest is not there.
Correct.
Anything else, Mr. McGinnis?
We've received feedback from the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the Ag Commission, and they have not recommended the town exercise its right.
I think every commission in town had to.
The Assessors Board made the same decision.
Assessors too, sure. Police Department involved?
D N R T.
Not that one. Okay, good. That's a good thing, I guess, yeah.
You don't want us to do it either?
Okay. Any other comment? Mr. McGinnis?
No, the board would just have to take a vote to not exercise its right of first refusal.
Make a motion that we do not take the right of first refusal.
I'll second that.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Nice of what you've done with that property.
Well, most of it's gone to D N R T.
Thank you.
Worked for everybody.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we probably should mention that, that the vast majority of the land is preserved for eternity.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Okay. We're doing okay so far? Battleship Harley Davidson, one-day license review. Anybody here?
Oh, yeah.
Great. Introduce yourself, please, and.
My name's Chad Raymond, one of the owners of.
Chad what?
Chad Raymond.
Pull this back right in front of you, would you, please, Chad?
Chad Raymond, one of the owners of Battleship Harley Davidson.
M O N D.
Yes, sir.
And I am Morgan Desmond. I'm the general manager.
Of that location?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnis? Oh, yes. So, the board had asked at the previous meeting to have the representatives from the dealership come in because there's been some issues with previous events in regard to parking, crowd control, a number of issues. So, particularly parking and the residents, the people attending, having to cross 6 and walk along 6. It's dark out. They did have a detail there, but there was a very large crowd. The board received a number of complaints. They asked that the representatives come in, along with the police chief and safety officer, to discuss the issue because there is an event that's planned in the future that apparently is going to be larger than the previous events. So, with that.
Okay. We want to begin. Any comments first, or you want to begin with us?
Well, actually, me, if you don't mind, I'd like to go first.
Yeah, because you're the one.
I'm the one that brought it to the attention. I live in the area, so every, each time you held an event, I had a meeting, so then I had to go home, so I'd go by. The first time in August, went by, saw a lot of cars parked on the north side of Route 6 with people crossing Route 6 over. Very concerning because, number one, where that area is, is a rise in the road and you can't see the traffic coming up westbound.
Sure.
Very carefully. So, that was very concerning with me. Brought it to, brought it to the attention of Mr. McGinnis.
For the meeting.
Last month, coming home, saw the same thing, less cars. But I also saw more cars now on the south side of Route 6, further down, parked kind of basically wherever there was a driveway or an open spot. Saw two police officers on the large lot across the way, so I pulled in and I says, hey, finally, they got a detail. They said, no, we're here on our own accord. So, I was there talking to them about it. As we were talking, a couple things happened. Number one, which I know are not your control, okay? First, let me say that. It's not your control.
Sure.
Couple bikers coming in, burnouts on Route 6. They entered your lot. Police officers went in to go look for them, couldn't find them, got lost in the crowd, okay, whatnot. As they were coming out, I see a dirt bike driving up, no plate, no light, no nothing, goes into your lot, comes around. My concern is, my basic concern is the parking along Route 6.
Sure.
And people crossing Route 6. I don't want to see anybody get whacked.
No.
And neither do you. The question is, is that where you're having, no, excuse me, where people are parking on other people's lots, I don't know if those lot owners are aware of it. I also know that you cannot control the noise level of some of your participants leaving. I can be honestly there, say I saw probably 50, 60 bikes go in. I saw about 50, 60 bikes go out. Probably 10 to 15 percent, soon as they hit the, soon as they hit the road, bang, they're gone. Others, nice gently go by, which is fine. I live about, let me put it in.
Thirty-six hundred feet.
Thank you. Less than a mile.
In a quarter.
I live less than a mile from you, on a straight line. I hear everything from the highway on Route 6, especially on the dead of the night. I hear the bikes all the time as they come and go. Not a big deal for me. It really is not a big deal and I could care less about that. But I do hear the loudness sometimes and it's just, you know, okay, it's just some idiot on a bike and you can't, I know you can't control that. And I'm, but I think my concern is, is that just the people you have in charge of your security, I don't think it is enough.
Okay.
You had two older people at the gate or at the, at the entrance, shooing away cars because there's no parking, because you have that small amount of parking, and you have everybody in the back. But there's, there's no, I think you have too many people for the lack of parking and the lack of parking is going, is a major concern when it comes time for people's safety walking up and down Route 6. And especially now that, as soon as it turns, you know, 6:30 around here at night, you know, it's almost lights out everywhere.
Yeah.
So, that is my major concern. I know, I know you cannot, you have a hard time.
Even if they pay.
Policing, somebody leaving, and the last thing I want to do is have one of our officers there waiting to catch somebody because I, they have better things to do.
Sure.
Or maybe not so much better things, but they have other things to do than to sit and babysit in an event, you know? So, that's where I'm coming from on this and I want to make sure that, you know, at least, at least some type of, maybe an announcement here and there that said, hey, guys, you know, we, you know, we really enjoy you having, being here, but, you know, please cognizant of the fact that, you know, we have people living right across the street.
Sure.
You know, and they take off because those people there are the ones that have complained to me about, you know, the noise. And I know it goes to nine, sometimes.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
It's usually 8:30. It's pretty much high and down.
Right. So, yeah, that's mostly where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're right. I mean, I agree 100%.
I'm sorry I need to interrupt you, but you got to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, no, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, we, we rely on our HOG members, you know, our people that come into the, you know, the group that supports our dealership, they call it HOG, Harley Owners Group. They're volunteers and, to your point, some of them probably aren't as, you know, not forceful, but, you know, they could probably use a little bit more direction with how to, how to park the cars especially. But then, as people are leaving and, and, you know, they definitely could use some direction on doing a better job. And, you know, I was there the first two. I wasn't there, the one in August and then the last one. The first two, you know, I'm out front yelling, yelling and screaming at them to, to make sure that we're, the flow is a lot better. So, but yeah, no, you're, you're right. I mean, we're, and the other thing too, and I want you guys to know, we're, you guys have been more than kind allowing us to have the, you know, with, with the events and the first couple that we had, our first three that, how many have we had? Three or four?
Four.
They've been fantastic and we want to do whatever we can to support the town and you guys have supported us and we're new, so we want to, want to keep, keep that relationship positive, you know?
Do you have a solution that you want to present to us?
So, um, well, for, yeah, I mean, we definitely need to make sure that nobody's parking across the street. I don't even know where that became an idea. Shouldn't be a thing.
It's human nature.
Yeah.
If somebody can't park in your lot, they're going to find a spot no matter where it is.
So, I have two questions, just for, I think we should hear from you as a solution. And I was hoping you'd come to us with a, with a solution. One is directing traffic by a professional and two is, where are the people going to park and what arrangements have you made?
Yeah, the only thing that I could think of is maybe getting a relationship going with the, with the gentleman that is next to us, the lot. I mean, I know that, you know, that it's vacant. He's trying to sell it. Maybe he'll allow us to rent that from him so that people are walking on the sidewalk versus walking across the street, you know, putting themselves in danger.
I mean, I know the police, when the police were there, the cars that were parked across the lot, the officers that were there were telling the people, you know, go up to Reed Road, use the crosswalk, and they were doing it. Once they left to go see those knuckleheads that went in burning the tires.
Yeah.
You know, then you started seeing people crossing.
Would it help you, you talk about a solution and I was, you know, I've heard half of what we're coming here to do. I was in the process of moving, not an excuse, except came down and that's how important it was to me to be here. But would it, would it be helpful if we paid?
Let me, let me interrupt you.
Detail?
Let me interrupt you for a minute. It was pretty clear by our note, and I can tell you straight out, this board will not give you another chance at the next event unless we solve the issue.
Right.
And I know you're here. And it's not up to us to how to, how you're going to solve the parking problem. You've, if you've got to go to these private places and make a deal with them and pay them to use it, I think if you need to have details there, that's not our issue. The issue is you to come to us prepared to say, here's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
And maybe you need to talk to our police officer over here to find out what the solution is.
Sure.
But if it doesn't happen, this board, I can speak, I can speak for the board to say, we won't, we'll pull that license on the next event.
I understand.
So, we can talk back and forth all we want, but I think that's what we're talking about. Mr. Mickelson?
I don't think you're serious enough. Honest to God.
Right.
I really, by just the way you're talking, you're not serious about this at all.
So, would it be?
And you don't, you don't think we, that, we, we consider this to be a serious problem.
Well, I don't think.
And that bothers me an awful lot, a whole, an awful lot. You got to get serious. You got to stop smiling. You got to get serious.
I'm not sure if anybody smiled.
Because, I'm telling you, I'm not voting for anything you guys do.
So, would it be helpful?
Unless you have a plan.
Would it be helpful if we paid for a detail? I mean, would that be a reason?
No, no, no. Hang on a second. I, this is not a debate with us as to what's good and what's bad. First of all, there are experts in town. You go to and say, what is the solution?
Yeah.
There are landowners next door, they're your neighbors, not ours, that say, okay, is there land to use? And if there's no parking, then you can't present us with a program. So, you got a lot of work to do. And I think I'm speaking for the whole group here to say, parking is a giant issue and hopefully you find parking that's on your side to avoid crossing the street. And secondly, is how are you going to get people in and out and direct them by a professional? And if it means you got to go and sit with the police department and find out what solutions are, that, we're not here to come up with solutions for you. It's not our job.
Yeah.
That makes sense to you?
I, it makes perfect sense.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm sorry if you guys felt that we were being unreasonable or, or not serious. I mean, we, we were.
They're not serious.
You know.
If you, I'm going to state this for the group.
How do you?
I just, I'll just, if you want to have that event coming up.
Yeah.
You need to have a parking plan, a, a directing of traffic plan, and you have to have it in a place that is acceptable by our police department, not by us, first by the police department.
So, what, what does that process look like? How do we?
Mr. McGinnis?
And we're willing to do whatever it takes.
You have to, so it's okay. Yeah?
You can contact the police department. You can call the chief's office, but he'll direct you to who you should be coordinating your plan with for details in safety. So, they, you'll have to want to get on that.
Okay.
Right away. It's, because your event's Sunday, Saturday?
Uh, it's.
It's not until the 20th.
It's next.
October 20th.
That's why we had it here.
Actually, we have another meeting. We have a meeting on Monday, the 17th.
Okay.
So, why don't, excuse me, so why don't you come back on the 17th with something concrete?
Would that be enough time?
With a bona fide plan that protects everybody involved, but maybe also you, you have a mailer? Send out something in your mailer, serious, serious business about how you're going to control it and what you expect of your crowd.
Okay.
What you expect.
Excuse me, Mr. Mickelson. We have chief of police here with us.
Chief Levecq, yeah.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. And we're certainly willing to work with you to come up with a solution to this. Just a couple other things, so we understand some of the problems that, that we saw out there that night. You guys have covered most of them, but there were a couple of other things that we need to talk about, too. It seemed like the area where the, the people were having the event back there, walking around, that parking was being allowed in that area and it was supposed to be kind of gated off so vehicles could not get back there for safety reasons. You know, I'm sure we're both concerned highly about safety. The second thing was, there was some kind of a, an event going on back there where they would do burnouts or whatnot. A couple issues with that is, there was no protection for the, for the viewers, people watching that event take place. If for some reason that, that motorcycle would, you know, begin moving, there were, there were people there, crowds right there, that we observed while we were on scene. The second thing is, that's, that's technically a noise violation. I don't think it was part of the permitting to allow that type of activity. So, I don't know what the process is to allow that, but I don't think it was allowed under the original permit. I didn't see any mention of, of that in the permit. So, those are a couple of the things that we're going to have to get sorted out.
Yeah, we can fix it up.
As part of that plan.
Yeah, we can get rid of it. It won't happen again.
Okay. Anything else, officer, that I missed, or?
Just the separation of spectators and parking.
Yeah.
Which cones, well, I know that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We need barricades back to where we can.
Yeah, so the cones, it's going to be some kind of a barricade that's, that's more sufficient than a, so.
Do we have enough barricades to go the entire length of the parking lot? I think we started.
Excuse me?
And we can talk about the plan, you know, right now. I just wanted to make sure we all understand what the problems were and then they can come back with a solution, hopefully.
I think that, I think that I can state our position. Our position is, the only one's going to settle this for you and make the plan right is the police department, the safety officer.
Yeah.
You go with them, you plan it. If it works, fantastic. We'd love you to have the event.
Sure.
You're, you're a great business in town. It's a great asset. This is not a negative about the, but you got to take us seriously. Understand that. Nothing will happen unless you make peace with the police department.
I get you, yeah.
Okay?
100%.
Anybody want to add anything to that? Mr. Brooks?
I have one more question because in our packet, we have a copy of an event, of a car show happening at your property this Saturday at 11:00 a.m.
Well, it's actually been moved, but we're not having, there's no beer, there's no band, there's no, nothing that we were aware of needed a license. It's just cars that are going to be parking in the back parking lot. But it's actually not that date anymore because we have a riding academy clause.
Right, okay.
That was not on our.
Yeah, no.
No, that wasn't on our list.
That's not, I don't think that.
Not necessary.
It's not necessary because there's no, there's no alcohol.
It's private, private property and they're doing it on their property.
Right.
We absolutely encourage you to have the event, but you've got to follow the rules. Is that fair enough?
Fair enough.
Great. Mr. Mickelson?
No, no, I'm.
Okay, Mr. McDonald?
Said enough, said enough.
The, I mean, the intent was not for you, for you to come here and get browbeaten, okay?
I get it, yeah.
You know, it's, I just wanted to stress the safety portion of it, you know, because to be honest with you, I'm up and down Route 6 three, four, five times, six times if I make round trips, you know, every day. So, I, I know Route 6. I know its little nuances. I know that, I see what goes on over there as far as people walking and, and the traffic. And so, when it comes time at night and you have people, you know, dark clothing, crossing Route 6 and you got cars coming up, you know, 50, 60 miles an hour, you know, it's going to be hard for them to stop, you know? And the last thing I want to see is, is somebody hurt, you know, especially on Route 6. And that eventually, you know, people like to point fingers and, you know, well, I was at this event. Okay, well, they're, they're the culprit, you know, that type of thing. So, my suggestion would be to contact, you know, the private lot owners in the area, see if you can work something out with the guy with the, you know, on the same side as you. You know, definitely work with our police department, work with our safety officer and the traffic division to see what can be done. Let's see if you can get a plan here for, you know, and I don't think you need to come here to the next meeting as long as we see the plan and it's approved by the chief, you know?
Okay.
Anything that's approved by the chief, 99.99% of the time gets an okay from this board. You know, we want to see you hold these events. We want to see you do this, you know? You know, we welcomed you when you made the, you know, when you made the purchase, you know, to come into town and I want to see this, I want to see this work out. I want to see you, you know, work well. But I also want to see safety for the people, for you guys on your behalf, for the neighbors and their quiet enjoyment and, you know, and, but we all know, you know, loud bikes save lives. We, you know, we've seen the, we've seen the stickers. We've seen all that, you know? But there is, there's a fine line between, you know, being a responsible biker and being a knucklehead, you know? And I think you, as the owners of this and, and the holders of this event, you need to kind of weed out the knuckleheads, at least to tell them, look, you know, we want to hold this again. Don't be an idiot when you leave, you know, type of thing. And I think that's, I think that's very important.
Okay. Mr. Gracie has joined the meeting. Any comments out? Mr. Gracie?
No, I'm listening. Everything's fine.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments?
Nope.
We're clear on it? I think we all are. We know where we stand.
Crystal.
Yes.
Crystal, beautiful. Good luck. You got, you got a challenge ahead of you, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
So, they will be on our agenda from October 17th to review?
Yeah. Well, it, well, right now, that license is approved.
Right.
We have to decide whether we're going to.
So, as part of our.
Revoke it.
Revoke it. So, as part of our approval of these events, since they came in front of us, now Sean looks over these one-day licenses and approves them.
Their license, their event was already approved for this day.
Right, right.
So, what we're looking at now is a safety plan, parking plan, whatever they work out with the police department for this event. And if it's adequate enough and it satisfies the chief and his, and his department's requirements, then they can proceed.
Right, so we will come to you.
But that should be on the. It, no, it should be on the full agenda.
Okay.
Not on a one-day thing. It should be on the full agenda.
Okay.
And then it'll come, it's going to be on our agenda next time.
Yes.
Either way.
All right.
Yes.
Okay? That makes sense? Great.
Yep.
We spend enough time on this one?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
I think we've made our point.
Next. Special Police Officer Appointment, Joe Viera.
I think we can skip this one.
Right.
How many hours it's since Saturday?
Yeah, really.
Good evening. Chief Brian Levecq. I'm here to request that very recently retired Officer Joe Viera be appointed as a special police officer. He's met all the requirements to hold that position and I recommend that he be appointed.
Well, guys, this is our opportunity to lose him.
No, I don't know.
Yeah, what do you think?
Motion to appoint.
Oh, you're easy.
We can make it to the next meeting. We can do the Harley approval this at the same time.
Motion to appoint.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it because if not, I'm sure I'll get like thousands of texts from Joe Viera.
Any comments or questions?
We don't want to lose him, so let's keep him on as a special officer.
Comments or questions?
Good luck.
All in favor of the special appointment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I hear none. It is unanimous.
And you're back on the clock.
5:26, 48 hours later.
Shortest retirement in history. Thank you for your service.
We love you, Joe.
Now you're the, yeah, you're, now you're the rookie on the special police.
I'll see you, I'll see you next Sunday, no matter where it is. Okay. Next, we're going to ask the chief to stay around in this one.
And I think the safety officer. And I think the safety officers.
Okay. Uh, next order of business is the Department of Public Works, the Tucker Road and Hawthorne, uh, location intersections.
Uh, yes, at that previous meeting when the board was reviewing the capital items on the warrant, they had some questions about the design items for Tucker Road and Hawthorne Street. So you asked that the DPW director come and give you an update on what those designs entail.
Tim Barber, Director of Public Works. So as you all know, a few years ago, MASTDOT took over the Route Six slash Tucker Road relocation project design. And then a short time later, in 2020, they designed, they decided not to go forward with the Tucker Road relocation and just work on the reconstruction of the corridor from Fons Connor Road to Hathaway Road. And they're also continuing to work on the next phase, all the way up to Slocum Road intersection. We, we, at that point, the Tucker Road relocation design was approximately at a twenty-five percent mark, and we kind of kept it at, on the back burner. And then I know the city of New Bedford decided to create a, an industrial park in part of the Whaling City Golf Club on Hathaway Road, which is going to add some additional, uh, probably heavy-duty traffic down to the, through the Hathaway Road, Route Six intersections, and the Fons Connor Road, Route Six intersections, as well as, you know, other, you know, other developments, like a two-hundred-and-sixty unit, uh, apartment complex further west on Route Six. Will also tend to add a lot of traffic through those intersections. So, uh, I spoke to our, our consultant, and we, I put a, a capital improvement project for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move forward with the design. Our consultant requested a project need form through MASTDOT, and they accepted. And so the next, the next, um, step would be to, uh, add a, a scope of, of the project to MASTDOT through their project intake tool. And we'd like to know the select board's thoughts on moving forward with that project.
This is the design for the Tucker Road?
Relocation.
Relocation.
So currently.
Not the old design, this is, this is the new design.
Yeah, so, yeah, because it'll, it'll be part of the old design, but not include Route Six. You know, the state's working on the Route Six, and I think they're currently held up with the Pascaman City River culvert crossing design, because they, they did an inspection, and now they have to decide whether, whether to repair, replace, or just move forward with the project. We also have a water main that we would like to replace in that area as well, so we would have to possibly go underneath that culvert, so. So that's where they are right now with the design of that section of Route Six. But, but the, their design is, is going to incorporate, uh, the infrastructure to be able to, to signalize the intersection at Hathaway Road and allow for a future connection with the relocation of Tucker Road to come into that intersection. So it, the infrastructure will be there to connect to, so we wouldn't have to go back into Route Six. But it, so if, if we'd like to move forward with the design, um.
So basically, they're, they're acknowledging the fact that it makes sense to relocate Tucker Road, but they don't want to pay for the relocation of Tucker Road.
Right.
Correct, so.
Correct.
They, I, I think they don't want to pay for the right-of-way.
Right.
Work, but if, if we come up with a design that's shovel-ready, they may take on the construction of the project. They just won't take on the right-of-way takings.
Which makes the most sense.
And that, that, a lot of buildings to go on that?
Correct.
Is that a million-dollar project, just that alone?
Maybe two.
Two million? Ju- just the taking of the properties? Okay.
Because that strip mall is, is three, there's three businesses there.
Okay.
It's commercial property.
Yeah, plus there's some taking at the country club. A very small portion, and there's water down in that area also.
Yeah, so that, I believe, will be part of the Route Six Hathaway Road intersection.
That's the state.
Yeah, that's the state.
No, I'm just saying, but that's.
That alone, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of work to do there because of the water.
Yeah, that's a tough area.
I have a question, Tim.
Yes.
When the, um, the Kentucky Fried Project was, uh, was brought up and defeated, they were working, using the, this redesign of that area as a, um, as the example to use in how wonderfully the traffic would flow out of Kentucky Fried based on all those improvements. Are those the same improvements that will be part of this project, along with, if we do the Tucker Road and the Hathaway?
So, so those improvements are, are, are planned to take place with this current project that MASTDOT is working on. Uh, so they plan to move the, the lights currently at Tucker Road, uh, easterly, approximately a hundred feet, uh, to align it better with Tucker Road. They, they also plan to extend the median easterly, and you wouldn't have the crossover of traffic from Champion Terrace. So anyone coming out of that intersection would have to head westerly on Route Six and U-turn at Fons Connor Road.
Do you have an opinion about that part of the project?
I think it'll definitely add, uh, vehicle storage, which we desperately need in that area, so it'll move, it'll move cars forward. You know, it'll allow for more storage, and it'll also allow for a, a turn right, um, on red at Tucker Road. So, so that any cars heading south on Tucker Road will continue to flow, so they, they won't have to stop, so that'll add more vehicle storage. Um, I think the, the original project aimed to eliminate that set of lights and just signalize the intersection at Hathaway Road and the new relocation of Tucker Road, which would have added a, a ton of vehicle storage, and it would have, would have extended the median straight across, so, so you wouldn't be able to come out of Tucker Road and take a left. The existing Tucker Road, you'd have to go to the new intersection, which would have, which would have, I think that would have taken care of the problem at Fons Connor.
Your opinion is that original project was the right way to do it?
Correct, yes.
And this is, even with all the work, and even with all the takings, and the two million of this and four million of that, it's not as good as what the original project was?
No, it's more of a value-engineered project.
Yeah, to save the state money, flush with money on top of it all.
Right.
Embarrassing.
So if we do, if we do come up with a, with a shovel-ready project, you know, and they've, they've accepted the, the project to, to move forward on the tip, you know, it, it's possible that they would fund the construction, which is, which is also big.
But shovel-ready, it worth, best-case scenario is a hundred and fifty thousand for the design, plus two million plus for the land-taking.
At, at best, yeah.
That's a town cost.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be more to push forward to the hundred percent design, so this is to get through the twenty-five percent and possibly further.
So it could be three hundred thousand for design and two million plus for the land-takings.
Yes.
And we still would end up with second-best compared to what the original design was.
Correct.
And no contribution from the city of New Bedford when we're coming down Hathaway Road.
And what is the timeframe?
On, on which one? On our, on the design? It's probably a, a few years out. I mean, just, just the Route Six projects are a couple of years out, so I think they're, they're looking at.
The, the timeline, when we met with MASTDOT, we had a meeting, when we found out about their alternative design, uh, their rationale was that, uh, they're going to proceed with the alternative design that should alleviate, uh, the traffic in the area, and that was going to go into construction in 2025. And then we talked about, well, going back to the original plan, and they had stated that that would push the project back another three years.
Yes.
So the rationale was that, well, let them move forward with the alternative, and maybe it does alleviate the traffic in the area, and, and, but still proceed on the town side with the relocation of Tucker Road, the design.
I don't think it'll be a hundred percent, uh, but I think it, it's definitely going to help. It may not alleviate at all, but it'll definitely help. Along with the, you know, the lining of all, all the signals, and once they're able to all, all talk to each other and, and programmed.
So we end up with a second, a second-class project at about two and a half million dollars' cost to the town, plus or minus?
Well, I, I think if we get our relocation in there, it'll, it'll be more of a first-class project, yes.
No, I'm saying.
Yeah.
The relocation.
Yeah, yeah.
But the Route Six portion is not as good either as what the original design was, the, that whole median, the Tucker Road area.
Right.
So for two and a half million dollars, to the town's cost, we're going to end up with a second-class.
No, so the, the state is funding their alternative one, which doesn't include the relocation of Tucker Road, so the town's not paying for any of that.
All right.
If we move forward with the, with the original plan, which is now the alternative, which is, the town pays for the design of the relocation of Tucker Road and the takings, then it would cost us that over two million dollars.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But the state might pick up the construction cost for that.
No, but the minimum's going to cost us two and a half million.
Yes, that was a few years old, so we'll see.
No, at the minimum, uh, any, and that, that's if they do the construction as well.
But the majority of the money would be the land-taking.
Correct, yes.
And at that point, they may be inclined to remove the signals at Tucker Road and extend the median as proposed originally, which would, which would make it all work.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds to me like we need to go forward with the design project, because we need to be, I mean, that takes time, and we need to be ready with a, a design and a plan, should the state be interested in entertaining it. We can't wait till the state is done with their project and then say, oh, we need something more.
But that means that we, we inherit the cost of land-taking and the design?
No, well, I think we inherit the land of the, and we inherit right now just the design cost.
So if you want to divert Tucker Road, which sounds like we really need to do that, uh, that's, it's if, if we're, if, unless we're satisfied with the state design, then it solves the problem, but.
And there's, I know one of the, the state representatives, uh, had asked for an earmark for a part of the, the right-of-way work. I, I think it was in, in, around the seven hundred thousand mark. So, you know, maybe we can reach out to our state reps and senators and see if we can get some more funding for this.
Mr. McGinnis?
Towards the right-of-way work.
We need to do something. We can't just sit back.
Uh, yes, I mean, so I, I think what we're doing now is the, the appropriate course of action, letting MASTDOT move forward with their alternative, because it would happen, uh, quicker, um, and hopefully alleviate some of the issue there, but also in parallel, continue with our design of the relocation and being prepared, um, to move forward with that, uh, with, when it's complete and trying to, uh, try to find some funding, uh, from the state for the taking.
Will the Tucker Road diversion have an effect on the traffic in and out of the police station?
Positive impact.
Positive.
Yeah.
Very positive, or just better?
Relatively positive, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Do we need to vote on this, or?
Uh, no, just an update.
Well, do we?
Do it.
It's on the town meeting, Lauren.
You voted for the design funds already.
Okay.
Yeah, um, you need to move forward. You can't be flat-footed here.
And looking for, uh, funding from every direction is an important.
Absolutely, so in the meantime, we will move forward with, with the twenty-five percent design. Since, since we initiated the, the original twenty-five percent design, MASTDOT has changed their, their, their process and requires a lot more of the, of the work upfront for the twenty-five percent. So once it gets through to twenty-five percent, it's, it's a lot more streamlined, so, so that's what we're pushing towards. And, and in the meantime, we can, we can look towards new, new funding for the, for the right-of-way work.
Maybe we'll only need to take Burger King.
What's that?
Maybe we'll only need Burger King.
No, it's not.
No, that was never in the plan.
It's never in the plan.
Burger King's not in the scope.
That property was always left.
Safe.
It was saved, and they went around it.
Which, which, which property?
The, uh, the hamburger joint.
Oh, okay.
The kid's a king.
Yeah, that's just west of the, the proposed scope of work.
Squeezed in, you grab a burger, going through the red light, I guess, huh?
That's it.
Well.
All right, then we have a question about Hawthorne.
Oh, yeah, so then Hawthorne, there's design funds for that, uh, which Mr. Barber can elaborate on, but that also led to a conversation about the intersection of Hawthorne and Slocum, which led to the next item on dangerous intersections.
How do we want to take this?
I would have Tim give you an update on the Hawthorne Road and what that entails.
So Hawthorne Road, Hawthorne Street, there's also a, an earmark, um, for construction funds. Uh, so we've pursued, uh, proposals for the design of, of Hawthorne Street, including, you know, shared-use paths, parking, uh, the travel lanes, you know, sidewalks on both sides, bicycle lanes. So more of a complete street design, and the, the costs are looking upwards of around five hundred thousand. We, we requested a hundred and fifty for the, for the twenty-five percent design, and that's where we're looking at. We have two proposals we're looking at right now.
It's five hundred thousand for the design only?
And that's from the New Bedford line, correct?
To Slocum Road.
Yep.
Yeah. And we would probably, through the design, we'd probably, uh, reach out to New Bedford.
Good luck.
See if they'd be willing to fund us going into that intersection at Brownell.
The, the culvert that was done, is that, is that, does that solve that problem?
Yes.
It did, I think, I think.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
It's a big project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's basically just taking care of, making Hawthorne like a fancy street with sidewalks and, and whatever, but it's, it's just remaining as it is, just, okay.
But it'll move traffic.
No, it, it's an important route. It's a, it's an ambulance route, uh, to the hospital, uh, it's a bus route, uh, you know, kids walk to school there. So it's, it's, there's, there's multiple schools, you know, we have the, the middle school, the Quinn Elementary, and then there's the synagogue.
Yep.
And they have a school, so there's, you know, there's residential across the street, so the, I, I know a lot of, a lot of people run around the, the Buttonwood Park, and then they'll, you know, they'll jog up and down Hawthorne Street as well, so, so we want to give everybody an avenue to use it.
So it's a pretty important project.
Absolutely. And, and we would, you know, we, as we look in, as we design the roadway, we could look at the intersection as well. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if it warrants any kind of signalization or stop signs, um, but, you know, we, we would definitely look into it. They, they would do traffic studies.
Of Slocum and Hawthorne?
At Slocum and Hawthorne, yes.
That was my concern.
That would be included?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so they do survey, do traffic studies, they, they check out the average, you know, vehicles per day, daily traffic.
Well, I can tell you that school department is, uh, very anxious to make some kind of improvement up there. And, um, it's true that we do have, um, we do have, uh, safety officers directing during school times, which is the busiest time.
They always have, yes.
But on the other hand, um, even before school, well before school and well after school, uh, it's still a busy place, and it's, it's a challenge, as you know, to get over there. And I, and I, I, I did talk to Joe Viera about a few, quite a few weeks back, and he, of course, the numbers don't lie. He said, it's not on the, anywhere near the top of the list in terms of issues, actual accidents and issues. And I'm, I guess I'm not sure why.
I look at that and find that shocking.
Yeah.
I feel every time I go through that intersection, I am a near miss.
Yeah.
Bottom of the list.
I've actually been a near miss, so, yeah.
So, so I, I, if you go by just the numbers, we wouldn't even consider doing anything at all, but.
Yeah.
And maybe it's just a question of extending the hours that the, um, that the safety officer directing traffic before and after they do it now, but that would be, you're saying that would be part of the study?
That would be part of the study, yes, absolutely.
I've given up on asking about stop signs, because the last time I did, it ended up being about three hundred thousand dollars. Chase Road and, uh, Westport Road. I asked for stop signs, simple, three hundred bucks apiece, whatever, just put up. Look what I, look what we got.
At the intersection?
Mm-hmm.
And signals?
Mm-hmm.
Waste.
At the.
Waste of money.
That's, um.
Hawthorne and, um, and Slocum?
No.
No, at Old Westport Road.
I mean, stop signs, we, if you were to.
Stop signs would work.
Yeah, we could, you know, the disco stop sign, like at the end of Chase Road in Russell's Mills.
Yeah, yeah, those, those work.
Would we ever?
But we still have accidents at that location, even with this, with the LED strobe, yeah.
With something, would we consider stop signs on, um, Slocum as you approach Hawthorne? Is that going to be, would that be part of the study?
Well, yeah, the, the, the traffic study would, would incorporate the intersection, so what, what, you know, they would have to recommend, you know, what they felt would work there, whether it's stop signs or whether it's signals. Or a flashing, or a flashing signal.
Can we segue into the item F, which is the dangerous intersection report?
Because I'd like to hear from the, uh, police department in terms of opinions about that and these others, so.
Absolutely.
Should we move into that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because on this list.
Next would be, the list is dangerous intersection report. Who can we hear from over there? We have.
Safety officer.
That's police department, the chief.
And, there we go.
Oh, we're right to the top, okay, very nice.
Big guy.
I'll start off anyways, maybe defer. Um, so I provided the, uh, the list. I was asked to, uh, look at various intersections around town, um, and rate them according to the amount of crashes that we go to. that we go to. We don't really perform traffic studies and so forth, that would be more DPW, but we can certainly, um, comment on, you know, crashes we respond to. So you got that list in order of the, um, amount of accidents, um, going back to 2019. Most important column essentially being the totals. State Road, Florence Corner or Westport Road, that was, that was the top of the list.
Shocking.
And was, is that where, I mean, all three of those roads, is that what you consider at the intersection on Route Six with the lights?
Yeah, so State Road, you know, one side's Florence Corner and one side's Old Westport.
Same road, yeah.
That intersection essentially. Uh, we counted it as, you know, one intersection because it's really, it's really the same location.
Yeah.
Depending on which side of the road it happens is how the officers would write it up and categorize it. Um, and then you just move right down to the next intersection and you got State Road and Hathaway Road. And you move down to the next intersection on State Road and you got Slocombe Road. So it's, they're kind of right in order on our list of, uh, the worst intersections in town. Uh, it goes over to Allen Street and Slocombe Road.
What happened in 2021 at Allen Street and Slocombe Road? That there were 12 accidents?
I, I don't know any specifics on these.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying like it's, there's so much, they're so.
About six more careless people.
Really?
Or it could have been a multi-vehicle accident, you know, where, you know, maybe more than two cars in one crash uh, happened during that, but that intersection does have lights currently. State Road and Tucker Road.
Right.
And then finally Hawthorne and Slocombe with, uh, just a total of 15 over that term. As you guys mentioned earlier, you know, I think a large part of that is the busiest times of the day there. There are traffic supervisors out directing traffic to help with the flow. And it, it may, you know, this, this data doesn't say it's not dangerous, it just simply says that we just don't have a lot of reported crashes there, which kind of indicates it's, it's not bad, but if there's a lot of near misses too, it's like, you know, that's not great intersection either, that there's a lot of almost crashes. It can be challenging to, to, you know, come out of that, especially Hawthorne Street when Slocombe Road, but it, you know, and there's multiple lanes too, there's that turn lane as well on Slocombe Road, can make it difficult to see around.
And visually it's tough to see cars coming out of the direction too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So.
The other, um, intersection that I'm surprised is not on here is Old Westport Road and Crossroad. Because have, I use that a lot and I don't know a good time to try to get there because it seems like there's always people from the university coming.
Very busy.
Yeah, so.
And that's crazy.
I'm just trying to think back if I, if that was in the list of intersections that we were requested to look at. I think we limited the certain intersections. I don't think we looked at every intersection in town. There were certain ones of interest that we were asked to look at.
So that one is a personal one because I travel that and, you know, always feel like, you know, should I go, shouldn't I go? Is that guy gonna turn or are they going straight because there's like two lanes coming anyway? But the other.
And I can provide that data.
All right.
And also, you know, let's face it, there's a lot of, uh, college students that travel that every year and sometimes they're not the best drivers. So that, I think contributes to maybe some of the crashes we see.
Be distracted.
On near misses.
I think part of, part of that also, at some point in time, the town was in discussion with UMass Dartmouth about relocating the entrance to the school so that it aligns with crossroads and so that it would warrant lights there at that time. At this time, the school is concentrating mostly on housing and their road structure, I don't think, is, is in their immediate purview. And I don't know if they have, if they're going to do any kind of, um, but that's, um, something that the town should be brought back in discussion with UMass Dartmouth about relocating that.
It's funny you mention that. We have had those conversations, so we meet with the chancellor regularly and that's one of the items that we've talked about is that relocation, that new entrance, because it benefits both the town and the university that, I think, uh, the way it's set up, it makes it more aesthetically appealing for the university to have the students drive in from that direction. Um, and it also helps with traffic flow, so we are looking at that. There is a design that's been completed, um, and we're, the chancellor's sending that over. We haven't seen it completed yet. Once we do, we'll review it with DPW.
We've talked about that for a long time.
Yeah, then we'll talk about some costs.
Safety wise, it makes sense too because the town's put, you know, a significant amount of money into having sidewalks on crossroads so that it aids any of the walkers from this campus to, you know, the, the shopping areas. Um, and the school is also aided by having their Corsair Cruiser or whatever they call it, you know, their shuttle, um, that brings the kids to the shopping centers, the malls, supermarket, whatever, you know. So I know they've done that, I've seen that. So, but it does make sense for them to, to, to have that realigned. My concern with this is specifically Slocombe and Hawthorne Street. People who generally use that know how to use that. And they're aware of when they can go, when they can't go. I'm just afraid that if we stop putting in any kind of traffic aids to stop and whatnot, that it just becomes more of a mess. Because there's, when you see traffic aids, there's less thinking involved, you know? Here, at least, you have to be a little bit of aware, you have to be cognizant of your surroundings and know when to go. When there's something there, you know, it's like, oh, okay, well, I'll just wait, there I go. You know, I think that's when it creates more of a problem. But, I mean, that's just human nature, to be honest with you.
You're talking about stop signs or?
Yeah, anything.
Um, you'd also have to get rid of that dedicated left turn lane too because you can't have two lanes and a, a stop sign. So that would create, you know, maybe some other problems too, you know, you're losing some of the capacity of the intersection.
Right, and then it would force the traffic down Allen Street, which would then force the traffic through the neighborhoods.
Right.
So, which is something I really don't want to do.
Yeah, and there are a lot of cars on Slocombe Road too and I think it would start causing backups, having everybody have to stop.
Well, there's backups now.
Backups already.
Right. But it would, it's gonna compound it, you know?
I mean, that's just, that's just people, you know, going to and from work and just having to be at the same.
Well, and sometimes at five o'clock, the traffic can back up from Allen Street, all of us all the way back to the school.
Yeah.
To what's looking.
But that's everybody going home.
Right. Do we, do we have any feel for like, stupid question, but how many, so many more cars on the road compared to, say, 10 years ago?
That would, that would fall back on a traffic study, but DPW would, uh, they may have data on that.
You have a, you have your own opinion about that?
I would say 25% more.
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of backups in town, I mean, even Tucker Road in front of the station, we see that every day. Traffic backs up quite far down Tucker Road, um, a couple, couple times a day, actually.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a relatively easy question to answer because as people get older, people are still driving, okay? Because there are plenty of 80, 90-year-olds out there still driving. I'm not saying anything. I'm not saying anything at all, it's too easy.
Know your audience.
And not only that, but you also have the younger generation, you know, getting their licenses. There's more people having access to vehicles. So there is more traffic out there.
And we have limited, uh, limited roadways to, to handle that.
Yeah.
You know, as I've always said, there's only four ways into this town.
Exactly.
There's only four ways into this town. And, and everybody uses those four ways to get to and from where they want to go.
So the end result on Hawthorne and Slocombe is that we're gonna improve Hawthorne dramatically. Also, at the same time, we'll do a traffic study to see what might be the best solution.
Sounds good. Yeah, sounds good.
The other, um.
And the only other intersections that I've heard from people who have contacted me are Elm and Memorial, and that's just the design of the road. It's got that, that kink there and then Elm and Prospect.
Near the cemetery.
Right.
Yep.
Memorial, yeah, right there. I mean, it's that, that quick.
It goes like sideways almost, yeah. And we've eliminated some, I mean, in the, as, as the years go, we've eliminated some pretty bad loops, you know, like Old Reed Road, okay, which is now the access road to the back end. That used to, that was a big, you know, big turn. There's other, there's other areas. One other area that generally gets speak about all the time and that's, uh, Shop Street and, um, Milton.
Oh, right.
You know, that's another one that just seems to cry out for at least a three-way stop sign. And, you know, I, I've asked for one, I've asked for a study for it, which is fine, but I'm afraid to ask for it again because next thing you know, they're gonna, the state's gonna want to put a roundabout in there. You know, so.
That would be land taking.
Oh, my God, there's no room.
Okay, so, I mean, that, I mean, to be honest with you, that was the first design. For, for Old Westport Road and Chase Road, the first design was a roundabout.
Really?
Yeah, and they figured that was just a little bit too much because they couldn't take away from the cemetery. So then they said, okay, let's put up lights.
In Ireland, they would have the.
$350,000 later.
Put a roundabout.
For a $900 stop sign.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments, uh?
Very interesting.
I can provide any of the data you'd like, like I can, uh, follow it on the Old Westport and Cross, just for you to take a look at that.
Anybody else?
And that'll be interesting if the, the school is looking at a change.
Yeah.
Yeah, that change for the school would be the ideal solution with lights there, I think.
I think a real study to determine the best way to solve it is what we, we need and that's what's gonna happen, so it's good.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Um, okay.
By the way, um, chief, before you leave, I know, um, Ms. Sergeant, ex-sergeant Viera was in charge of the traffic, uh, safety division. Uh, who is his replacement now?
Right there. This guy.
We have here tonight Officer Steve Canario, join me tonight in case any difficult questions came up about traffic. Um, he's gonna be taken over for Officer Viera.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's all we need to know.
You do a great job, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Timmy, I guess you're all set too. Thank you. We'll call you back in the next vacation, for sure. Okay. Now, we're supposed to go at, uh.
Not till 6:30.
Do we have to break until then, is it, uh?
We still have.
You got one more thing, gee.
We got still a little more to go.
But we could do everything else.
Let's go, let's do the whole thing.
Just knock everything out.
Please, don't take a break.
Please. You got a half hour.
That's why we started an hour and a half early.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
Don't be.
Workshop meeting scheduled discussion. We, um, we have talked about, um, and I think with a, with a, a, a good amount of unanimity that we want to schedule workshops with various departments or committees in town to try to, even just what we did too tonight was try to understand, we're not the traffic department, we're not the police department, we're not the DPW, but just looking at the roads and the intersections, try to put people together and make decisions and help things out is what we're trying to do here and that's the purpose of these workshops. And, um.
Support their work.
Excuse me?
Support their work.
Their work and better communication, what we can do to help out. We're not interested in making their decisions, we're not interested in their jobs. Uh, we're interested in making this a town that can communicate well. And, uh, Mr. McGinnis has shown that that's, uh, what we do best and we, we do it well. We're gonna continue to, to, to collaborate in that way. So, um, we talked about, uh, scheduling, uh, in October and November possibly and we talked about doing it, uh, either before meetings at some point. So, Ms. Brooks, you got something to say about that?
Um, I just created a, a template for meeting discussions just so that we would have some background information before we started the meeting. So we would have the mission and the objectives, the goals and timelines of the group that we're meeting with so we have an idea of what's on the, you know, what the direction is and then we can know where we can support them and how we can support them. And then, you know, are they, uh, an expense, uh, creating organization or department, board, committee? Are they a revenue generating board, committee, department? And then potential topics I put down, you know, their space, where are they located? And what are the constraints, limitations? Do they have too much space? Do they have not enough space? What are their services? How are they streamlining their services? What sort of online processes are they using, either for permitting or, um, their programs? What's their personnel? Do they have shared positions between other departments? Duplicate positions? What are their needed positions? Do they have certifications or specific skills that are needed? And then what do they have, if they have any vehicles? Where are they garaged and maintain and what's their replacement schedule? Because that's what we're looking at on, you know, CIP. And then when I first got on the board, I talked about the community service survey and, um, I think we could incorporate that into our discussion, what would we be looking for? I took the department's boards and committees off of our website and I think we have a lot of perhaps boards and committees that do not have disbanded, that are listed on the website, but also there are some that we can meet, one meeting would, with a department, boarder, committee. There are some intermingling of those and so it may be one meeting that we can talk about, this whole group of things. And October, November and December meetings that we have only provide us with six potential workshops before the new year, but I think if we have this list of, I mean, the boarding committee is, you know, goes on. There are some that we need to, maybe we need, we would like to meet with sooner than others, but I think it behooves us to meet with all of them, especially the committees that we're appointing people to, to make sure that we know the work of the committee and how we can support it and where it fits in. You know, we just had another group come to us about getting a new committee, that tree committee. You know, where does it, where does it fit in? So.
Anything else? Mr. McDonald?
No. I mean, just put it this way, I mean, we, I know, I know our intent is to meet with as, you know, many boards as possible, so I, I, you know, we don't have to squeeze them all in before the end of the year. I mean, we have next year too. You know, so it's, it's, but I think at some point, what we need to do is we need to prioritize which ones we want. And I would say right now, the pri, any priority as far as meeting with the boards would be the ones who have the most impact in the town that we also can, can talk to and, and discuss, but also the ones that, you know, we appoint.
Yep, I, I would.
That's, that's the key. I mean, I, I don't, I would love to talk to Parks and Rec, but we don't appoint them, they get elected.
Yep.
We can work with them. Same thing with the Board of Health. You know, and I, I'll be honest with you, the Board of Health aspect of it would probably be this giant rabbit hole because none of us.
Very technical.
Very technical with, with that and we would be probably lost and Chris Michaud would just probably blow our doors off in, in any kind of discussion, so.
I have an additional attitude. And I, I, I think that a lot of what, uh, Ms. Brooks had to say, um, I think there's, I, I would call that a second tier where we can really help out and see where we're spending money and where the priorities are and take it. But I'm gonna come right out and say that I'm gonna give you, for instance, and this is, um, no personal knock on anybody in, in this department, but I think one of the priorities we need to do is talk, have a session with the zoning board of appeals. And why would I do that? Not because I don't think they do a great job, because they do, but I think they have a certain way of how they work, what they do, and I like to have a discussion with them about what, how that fits into the town, uh, direction and how we feel about it. We're not gonna make decisions for them, we don't wanna, we, we don't wanna comment on the decision, we wanna talk about what their focus is and how they make decisions. And personally, what I've heard about that one, I'll come right out and say, is I think they, they try very hard to work on every case on a case-by-case basis. And I think that that deserves a discussion and if we end up, that we end up agreeing with them because they have a real, um, a fervor towards it, great. But I, I can't remember a time in my history of town that we've had a discussion with ZBA about how they work, how they decide, these are wonderfully competent people, they put tons of time in.
Right. Right.
They're very qualified, I have great respect for them, but I'd like to have a talk about it.
And they are appointed by this board.
Okay.
Which is another criteria.
I think that's an important, an important piece.
And that could also give us a feel for how we do others, yeah.
And I think it's also a forum for the townspeople to, watching these workshops, to know more about what they do.
Yeah.
What's that purpose?
Well, I mean...
They wanna get involved.
Gives them a little more to talk about and get, get in front of things.
But the thing, the thing is, is that there's, there's no department, no board that works in a vacuum, that doesn't affect another component of what's going on in this town.
Hundred percent.
And that's the key, that's part of the key that everybody has to realize, is that this may be your wheelhouse in, in the way your committees run, but your decisions also have an effect on other boards and other, and other components of the town and what the town wants to do down further. So, you know, you cannot conduct business in a vacuum. You know, you need to conduct business with at least some type of knowledge or some type of...
Awareness.
Awareness of, as to what's going on. You know, and, and, and I think that's key, that's key for everybody, including us. So, and, and I think that's, that's something that needs to be stressed.
Yeah, I don't know, as far as scheduling is concerned, I don't know if we can meet. We're talking about meeting before our meetings on the same night?
No, I, I would, myself, I would prefer a workshop separate from, from, from our business. Because our business, you know, sometimes when you look at it, it's a, you know, it's a two, three-page agenda, and we get through with it real quick, and sometimes we have a one-page agenda, and we're here longer than a two or three-page agenda. You know, depending upon the subject.
Well, I was, I was on the impression that because we meet on Mondays, it's a Monday, and it would be a separate meeting before for an hour, say, of just for that particular department, but I'm open to whatever works best.
I'm game for either, I mean, I only put, you know, an idea down for, because we already know those dates. It would, it does impact our ability if we scheduled them every time, if we could have an executive board as well, I think that's too much. We can't do a workshop, an executive board, in our regular session.
It never is enough time.
We're having executive meetings pretty often, so it's, yep.
So, we certainly can look at another night, I just don't, you know...
We'll have to look at when they meet as well.
I think it's important to set the, our meetings.
Yep.
And then, when we invite them to a meeting, we can offer, you can choose from this date and this date. Not coming is not an option.
All right, I think they'll come. I think, I think there's a certain amount of respect for what they do, and we have to make sure we communicate that. I was at a recent ZBA meeting, and I watched them because I, I think it's really, really important, and the way they try to work things out, it's, there's tough decisions to make, tough, and they really invest themselves in it. But I, I don't know if anybody wants to consider another, where, where there's a priority, we can pick. I think we ought to pick a couple and try to get those done and see how they go. Is that, and I think ZBA, personally, should be one of them, otherwise...
I think ZBA should be the first.
Okay.
There's a lot going on in that board. I was on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's...
Were you?
I was, yeah, early on in my career.
Is it World War I, World War II?
Civil War.
Civil War, okay.
Before zoning came up.
Civil War. I know that when we talked earlier, there were a number of people, a number of us that had other meetings that we attend in the evening.
Yep.
So, we need to coordinate our schedule.
And their meetings as well.
Right, and their meetings. I'm just gonna say, I love a calendar, so I have no problem, you know, reaching out to each of you when you give me the nights that you can't come and...
Throw some dates out.
What do they call it?
Okay.
Doodle pad, use that? I found that the other day, I was strange, but it worked.
Mr. Gracie, I didn't know if he had anything to say about our workshops.
Frank?
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Anything besides ZBA that we can maybe reach out and get a couple of, or do you wanna just try that one first?
I'll go with the ZBA first.
Yeah, and I, I know that we, there were some others because we were looking at the work of the, something else that came up.
I mean, the harbor.
The waterways, but it's also, it's also the waterways, but it's the harbor management plan. Like just, yeah, implementation, thank you, big, long title, but, you know, so that's one that's...
That's the November one that we should look at.
It's the Harbor Master, it's the...
November, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
So, that's like two board, the harbor, I mean, it's a big thing, but just to know the scope of what's happening.
Hundred percent.
I don't think a lot of people realize what, what they do.
And that way, we can highlight the harbor management plan.
Let's try ZBA in October and waterways in November.
Yeah, that'll be great.
And as far as dates are concerned, do we wanna send something out, or look at their schedule and our schedule and try to come up with a plan? And we'd like, obviously, like to have a, a live meeting.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Best way to handle that, Sean.
So, I can send out something if you want, or I can take notes right now. You can tell me right now what your bad dates.
It might be better just to send out...
Send something?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Let's do October, and then we'll get that done, then we'll do one for November.
Okay.
That sound all right?
Maybe the same, maybe the same day for both, maybe?
I think that will hurt my head.
All right. Okay. Very good. Any other comments? Hey, very good, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on, Sean. Town administer, administrator update, next on my list. Now that I've skipped it over and have, missed half the things.
Just a few updates. One item that's more internal, the external is Gary Carrero, our interim finance director, has implemented a new purchase order policy in town that will help to streamline staff procurement by raising the purchase, purchase order policy requirement. Previously, it was zero, now it's $5,000. State recommends $10,000, but, so we're being conservative. But also, this lines up with our financial software application, Munis, that we're going to start having staff entering their purchase orders in Munis, which helps us adhere more effectively to state procurement laws. So, it's, it's a big policy internally, it's been well received by the staff because it's less purchase orders, and we're gonna move forward and be more efficient. Under collective bargaining, thanks, Gary, for helping to implement that.
Good job.
Collective bargaining, we're still working away, but we have a tentative agreement that we'll be presenting to the board with another one of the units, so we're, we're chipping away at them. An item of note, park revenues, Tim Lancaster, our park director, was mentioning at our department head meeting today that revenues for both the bucket and beach stickers were well exceeded previous year's revenues. So, we talked about the use of the recreation resources in town, they are increasing exponentially, so this is just proof of that. Tim Barber left, our DPW director, but the drought level has been decreased from a level three to a level two, so that just...
Due rain.
Yes, so that means that limit outdoor watering to after 5:00 PM before 9:00 AM. Under human resources, we're reviewing park and recreation operations and staffing in light of the increase in use of services. We're hoping to address a lot of the increases in this participation, not only in camps and programs, but also at, you know, the, all the playgrounds and the beaches. We're also reviewing DPW operations and staffing and trying to address issues with position parity and recruitment and retention and providing better services to the community, so I've been working with Tim Barber on that as well.
Just one question, Sean, about the Parks and Rec, I know this summer, because Tim and Becky were so busy checking on parks, there were days that the office was closed here. So, was that part of the looking over? Okay.
So, one thing is, you know, Tim and Becky are excellent employees, they are two employees, so we're working on some succession planning and how to get all the work done and provide best, the best services with the staff by evaluating staffing, so we'll soon flip it up.
Well, we're just, well, we're still on this, was there, did Tim give you any idea as to how many beach stickers were purchased online versus walk-in?
Uh, no, but we have that, I can provide that, I don't have it handy, but we have that easily.
I was just curious how that...
It was a lot.
I got mine online, and it was easy.
I wanna say it was about 10%, but we, you know, one thing to keep to know, 10% of the stickers were sold online, but we did not advertise that the stickers were available online widely. So, next year, we will, and next year, we're really going to encourage people to purchase their stickers online. Also, they'll be able to purchase them right after the first of the year instead of, usually, they go on sale May 1st, so we'll encourage people to start purchasing their stickers after the year.
Is it unfair to offer an incentive to do it online, or that penalize people who can't do it online?
No, I don't think, well, you know, one of the items we might have to look at for next year when we evaluate staffing is, is the office going to be open for beach sticker sales five days a week? So, maybe it's only open a few days a week, and if you, people want stickers, they purchase them online.
Force them to purchase them online.
It's much more efficient to purchase online, it's more convenient.
There's a fee to purchase it online, just like all the...
So, that'll be part of your research.
Yes.
Great.
So, we're looking forward to that.
Of course, the weather really helped, too.
What, pardon?
The weather helped quite a bit.
Oh, yes, yeah. You know, we're really seeing an increase in use, which is great, so we wanna make sure we can handle that. Just when we talk about the Seaport Economic Council grants, one of the items we're looking at is, is part of the Dias Landing parking assessment that we're in the process of evaluating. You know, this, with, town has an MOU with the state on boating access, on part of that property, a good portion of that, we've met with the state access board just to discuss that MOU and what can be done in the future. They're really concerned about just providing access to the public for boaters. So, we had some discussions about the Roger Street boat ramp area, and if something can be done there, would they be willing to kind of migrate a lot of their use over to the Roger Street area? They seemed amenable to looking at maybe some options. So, what we're doing is we're gonna apply for a feasibility study of all of Dias Landing through the Seaport Economic Council in the spring for a grant to just see what the property can be, how it can be best utilized. And also, apply for a grant to do a design and construction of a boat ramp at Roger Street. The boat ramp that's there is more for sunfish and small sailboats, but we would like to look at constructing a larger boat ramp for a large boat. So, could be pretty exciting, these are just grants that we're gonna apply for, but, you know, with the, as I mentioned, with Parks and Rec, with the use increasing as well as boaters increasing, we wanna maximize Dias Landing as best we can, and we think doing a feasibility study that evaluates the whole site as well as parking in the area would be very beneficial to the town as a whole. So, that's coming down the road in the spring, but we had those discussions recently. We're finalizing the Recreation Center request for proposals for owner's project manager, which is the first step in the design. We hope to have those done this month and present to the board later this month. We've signed our contract to upgrade our website, the kickoff will be October 25th internally with staff, with an anticipated go-live date of February 15th. These are estimated dates, so, but this, that's the schedule, so hopefully by spring, we have a new website that's up and running, and is more user-friendly. And we've finalized the bid specs for the disposition of the old police station, which is taking it down. We hope to have those put out to bid probably next week or the week after. And the bid was awarded for the tank removal on the site, and that work should be starting in the next couple of weeks. And lastly, one item of note, Ed Bailey is one of our newer building inspectors, he just recently passed his exam to be a certified building commissioner, which is quite a process. This is, improves, you know, he, so he can certainly now be a building commissioner, so Joe Braga is very happy because he has a, not that he's going anywhere, but he likes to have a succession plan in place, and Ed Bailey's been an excellent employee, but also improves our level of service to the community from the Building Department, so we're excited about that.
Excellent.
Nice.
Wonderful.
That's a lot.
We got a few more minutes, we'll continue on?
Yeah.
To old business? Okay. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, let's see. COVID, no new updates, I don't know if the board wants to continue to have this under old business, but it might be something to think about, I wanted to mention that, but maybe as we approach the cold of flu season, we leave it there for a little bit longer. Bliss quarter, no new updates, Lake Nokochuk, no new updates. Minister of Broadband, you know, we have the feasibility study funded on the capital plan, but also, we have the ascertainment hearing tonight as well. That is all I have, under old business.
I take it, minutes, we do?
Uh, there's no minutes.
No minutes, right, okay. We'll keep going.
Yep.
Select board updates. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I just want to, we'll have more information at subsequent meetings, but on November 4th at Rachel's Lakeside, the Representative Christopher Mackey and the Friends of the Elderly will be holding their annual Veterans Luncheon. For any Dartmouth veteran who is interested in attending, please call the Dartmouth Veterans Office at 508-999-4717. It's a well-attended event, and this year, I believe the guest speaker is going to be the first female commander of the USS Constitution. I don't have her name, I apologize, but it's a big deal.
Old Ironsides?
Old Ironsides.
Oh, wow, okay.
First female commander.
Nice. It's the one that turned around and then...
She'll be there.
Yeah, very nice, okay. That's it, Mr. McDonald?
That's all I have.
Mr. Mcginnis, anything?
I just wanna go over this past Saturday evening, we, the three of us were at Whitesun, what, Tapa? To celebrate 100 years of the Dartmouth Police Department, and what a celebration it was. It was a wonderful evening, celebrating such a, such a milestone, personally speaking, I'm almost there, so... But it truly was exciting, probably the second most exciting thing I've done with the Police Department next to, you know, being part of that wonderful group that built that beautiful police station. So, wonderful time was held by all, and lots and lots of happy people, and enjoying a very wonderful evening.
I could not attend, we had a wedding to go to that evening.
Totally missed it, yeah, it was great.
But, thank you, but I, knowing that there would be someone, some folks on call that evening working, and they were also unable to attend, I dropped off some black tie cookies for them to enjoy.
Is it 5% of the work, of the workforce have to be on?
Very sweet.
Five, there's gonna be five guys plus the supervisor.
Right, right, yeah, and, you know, some people had to do it.
Some people had to work, right, so I, I...
Very nicely done.
I dropped off a treat for them.
Yeah, well, what's, one of the nicest, the supervisor, from my understanding, the supervisor offered to take a shift for somebody who was coming off of COVID, off of COVID protocols, so that they could attend...
Oh, nice.
Ball, so that they themselves did it, so...
That's great.
But, yeah, and it was nice, it was, it was a nice event, it was nice to have, and the oldest retiree still in town was there.
Lefty Martin?
I wasn't gonna mention his name, so I wasn't gonna mention his name.
He's my friend, I can bet you on it.
Lefty was there along with some of the other retiree officers that basically kinda kept me in the straight and narrow when I was younger, so, yeah, it was, it was nice. It was a great event.
Anything else, Mrs. Brooks?
And the state police drumming five band was like...
Mr. Gracie, anything for you?
No, I'm still listening.
A couple of things, we are scheduling our second meeting of the Native American History Committee, moving along well, and we have some really, a mission to coordinate the towns' efforts with the schools to make our history well-known and as proud as ever, and we have a great group assembled. I also wanna mention and thank Rob Elme from the DPW, he and I have met regularly, we also met with, with Mr. McGinnis, and he's a, Rob's a fantastic addition to our town, he is the chair of the DPW, and working so well with Tim Barber, and it's, it's great to see the progress we're making all around, and of course, Mr. McGinnis is the glue that makes it all happen, so... Okay, we have about five minutes before the hearing. We take a break?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion that we recess until 6:29.
6:29?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Don't, don't be opposed, okay, good. We'll be back at 6:29, thank you.
Thank you. Of October 3rd, and we are entering a public hearing. The public hearing is on. What's a fancy word, Sean?
Cable ascertainment.
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 Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Make a motion that we open up the hearing.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nay, I hear none, we are a public hearing. I'm going to read this first, and we're going to hear from Mr. Chase. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dartmouth Public Hearing on Comcast Cable's License Renewal. This hearing is part of the cable license renewal process to ascertain the community's cable-related needs. Notices the hearing was posted in the Dartmouth Week Newspaper on September 15th and the 22nd, and notice was also posted on the town website and social media accounts. Copies of the legal advertisements I hear entered into the hearing record as Exhibits 1 and 2. By way of background, Comcast Cable's license expires on September 5th, 2023. Federal and state laws require holding a public hearing to allow public comment on local cable needs. We will receive public comments about cable-related needs and about how Comcast has performed under its existing license. In this proceeding, we are open to comments about Comcast cable-related matters, including but not limited to customer service, the town's needs regarding the local cable television studio, community programming, and public educational and governmental access, local video origination capabilities, and the town's much-needed municipal institution network. Note that this process of accepting comments on cable needs and interests will remain open even after the closing of tonight's public hearing, and members of the public may submit additional comments for our review in connection with the license renewal process. Please send these comments to the Dartmouth Select Board Office at 400 Slocum Road, or by email, too. I'll read that one more time. You can mail it to the 400 Slocum Road address at Town Hall, attention to Select Board Office, or by email. At this time, we welcome and will hear from Comcast representative Patrick Scherens, if he is in attendance. After Patrick, we will hear a brief presentation from Peter Chase, Dartmouth's Director of Media, and then proceed with the public comment process. Please state your name and address before making comments. Please keep your comments no longer than three minutes. The Gettysburg Address was only 230 words. Okay.
I'm not gonna hear that tonight.
Yes, Patrick is here?
Good evening, my name is Patrick Scherens, I'm here, Government Affairs Representative for Comcast. Wanted to first just thank the committee and members of the community for inviting us to attend this hearing, which is one of the first and most important steps in the cable license renewal process. As I'm sure you know, Comcast has been a proud partner with Dartmouth Community Media and the Dartmouth community as a whole for many years, and today I'm here to listen to those testifying about the needs in the community as they pertain to the cable license renewal. I also look forward to working with the committee and the town to draft a beneficial and sustainable license in the coming months, and really welcome the opportunity here from everyone today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Hi, my name is Peter Chase, Director of Media for the Town of Dartmouth. We're gonna go through a quick, brief history of what Dartmouth Community Media has done over the last 10 years during this contract, and some of the ideas that we have going forward. Dartmouth Community Media, known as DCTV, is a municipal department committed to empowering the community by producing engaging content that is distributed throughout various media platforms. DCTV has a seven-member advisory board. Our current board members are Paul Lavasser, who is the Council on Aging Liaison, Cynthia Rose, who is the Community Liaison, Russ Robinson, who's our Technology Liaison, Jim Thompson, who's our Chairman and Sports Liaison, Sean McGinnis, who's the Town Administrator. We also had an Educational Liaison, Tracy Olivera, and she just recently retired. I believe Jonathan Galishaw in the back corner will be the, coming up for appointment for that position in the future. And then we also have one open position now as a Community Liaison, so if anyone wants to join, please let the Select Board know. DCTV was formed in 1994 as an education and government access center. We were located inside Dartmouth High School, began offering classes to the students in 1995, under the direction of Dr. Cynthia Marlin. Until the opening of the new high school in 2002, DCTV taught and mentored numerous students in the video production field, many of whom went on to have successful careers in the television, movie, and multimedia industry. In 2010, DCTV moved into the new space at the Old Town Hall. This started the process to expand DCTV to an educational, there we go, educational, government, and public access center. In 2003, the Town of Dartmouth and Comcast renewed the cable contract, which provided the funding for us to launch public access in 2015. In June 2013, Town Meeting approved their request to send special legislation to the state to create an enterprise fund for the purpose of funding DCTV. The state approved this legislation in 2014, and started, in fiscal year 2016, the Town Meeting made the first appropriation to the newly-formed Enterprise Fund. All of DCTV's expenses, including payroll, employee benefits, maintenance of the DCTV studio building, equipment repair and replacement, and other miscellaneous DCTV-related expenses are covered within the 5% of Comcast revenues collected through the cable contract. Since the signing of the current contract, DCTV continued to add its coverage of government meetings, schools, and town events, and began to offer public access classes. On our government access channel, we added coverage of more municipal meetings and stepped up the coverage of local events. Some of the programs we added were Your Town, hosted by Stanley Mickelson, a Select Board member, Voices of Women, hosted by Gail Forts from the local chapter of the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women, and Around Town, which features stories and upcoming events taking place around Dartmouth. In 2015, we partnered with Dartmouth Police Department and Detective Kyle Costa and created a holiday video that we feel was the first time a video from a police department went viral for a good reason. The video featured police officers tracking a suspect who was trying to steal Christmas, and in the end, the Grinch was apprehended and the DPD saved Christmas. Within hours of the release of this video, it aired on every Providence and Boston news station. By the next day, many news station programs and hundreds of local news stations across the world aired the video. Within 48 hours, the program had over 2 million views online and still continues to have views to this day. Since 2015, we have produced a few videos every year with the police department and have had numerous other videos go viral across the world with millions of views. We continue to cover Dartmouth Parks and Recreation Summer Concert Series, Veterans and Memorial Day Services, and Council on Aging Events. We continue to work with the New Bedford Y WCA, Coastline Elderly Service, Dartmouth Historical and Arts Society, and Dartmouth Cultural Council to promote and cover their events and speakers for the Dartmouth community to enjoy. On the educational access front, we continue to cover Dartmouth Public Schools and UMass Dartmouth events, including lectures, school concerts, graduations, and special events throughout the year. Our staff also provides the Dartmouth Public Schools with live audio production services for their larger events. This provides high-quality audio, not only to the people in the attendance, but also the viewers at home. Two of the more memorable productions took place when Dartmouth High Football Team went to Gillette Stadium in 2014 and 2015. We sent a crew of over 10 people and all the equipment to produce a three-camera live mix with graphics, replays, announcers, and pre- and post-game interviews. Recording these moments in a high-quality local production was a great experience for everyone involved. DCTV continued to train Dartmouth High School students in video production. Every year, we would have a few students participate in an internship program. During their internship program, they worked on location productions and took part in all aspects of producing videos, including camera, graphics, and replay operators, as well as directing the entire production. Before 2015, public access in Dartmouth was only a drop-off service. Dartmouth residents could drop off a completed show and have the programs cable-casted on public access channel 95. In 2015, DCTV launched our public access training courses. These courses covered remote cameras, studio production, and post-production editing. Up until 2020, DCTV held these courses two to three times a year. We have recently started to offer these courses again since the COVID-19 restrictions have been lifted. One group that is an active member in the, is the Dartmouth Historical and Art Society. They have trained a few individuals to record and edit their monthly speakers on a variety of subjects. This group is extremely active and still records their programs today for cable cast on channel 95. We have also had many local residents produce their own videos. Some of those shows include Feng Shui, Pottery Corner, Talk and Roll, and Roots of Faith. We also cable cast programs from other communities once they have been sponsored by a town residence. Some of these shows are Paul Santos Live, which is a very good show, South Coast Matters, Sidewalk Entertainment, Energy Week, and some sessions of the Massachusetts House of Representatives sessions. On March 13th, 2020, the world as we knew it changed. While many offices closed down and went to remote-only work, DCTV kept going. Our staff joined the COVID response team for the Town of Dartmouth, working with the Dartmouth Health Department and Detective Kyle Costa. We began updating, producing update videos and social media posts on Dartmouth's response to the virus. For the first few weeks, we would create daily updates on social media and two to three videos a week. As the time drew on, the updates would become weekly for the next six months. Once it became evident that the shutdown was going to go on for longer than 14 days, we turned our efforts to providing a solution for the town to hold important government meetings, DCTV research, develop guidelines, and train town officials, boards, and committees on the use of a virtual meeting platform to conduct their business. During the virtual meetings, DCTV staff also provided technical assistance and recorded them so that the general public would still have access to the meetings as required by the open meeting law. Our biggest challenge came in May 2020, when the decision was made to hold our June Town Meeting virtually. Due to posting and mailing requirements, we had about seven days to research and create guidelines to host a virtual meeting for over 200 people. On June 20th, 2020, the town held a very successful town meeting with over 250 people in attendance. This would not have been possible without the hard work of the DCTV staff, the town's MIS Department, and the Dartmouth Public Schools Technology Service Department. This meeting took 10 technicians to cover everything from PowerPoints, voting, muting and unmuting participants, calling in, call-in technical support, and checking in town meeting members. The town held four virtual town meetings during the pandemic, and every one of them was a success due to the hard work of this technical team. During this time, DCTV was also asked to assist the Dartmouth Public Schools on a number of virtual programs. These included graduation, senior events, music concerts and competitions, and high school sporting event coverage. During the 2020, 2021 school season, school year, we recorded weekly videos for the Dartmouth High School marching band during their outdoor field show and indoor percussion show season. We would record multiple takes of their performance each week and upload all the videos for the music department staff to review and submit by Tuesday of that week for their competition. Finally, during the same school year, we livestreamed all of the Dartmouth High School sporting event home varsity games. Due to restrictions in place, no fans could attend games during the majority of the school year. This is a tremendous undertaking, however, our services provided the community with the opportunity to view these games from the comfort and safety of their homes. DCTV has made numerous capital equipment upgrades over the last 10 years. We have upgraded our cable cast playback system, post-production editing computers and server, studio video and audio equipment, and video and audio equipment in this Marlin meeting room. We have also purchased new equipment for our public access members, equipped a second hybrid meeting room at Town Hall, and a portable video switcher for coverage of events at locations where we cannot use our production truck. We currently are in the process of building a new set for our studio and upgrading the video and sound equipment in our production truck. In the current cable contract, Comcast provides a fiber-based institutional network to 16 town and school buildings in Dartmouth. This network is considered by the town as critical infrastructure. First and foremost, this network allows DCTV to transmit live video over the access channels from multiple sites. This is important as different meetings and events take place in different buildings due to the size and amenities available at these locations. This network also connects all the town and schools' phones, video, and management software together. This allows for a smoother and faster interaction between the town's offices. It also allows for data backups to off-site locations within town. It is imperative that this network remain in place in the new contract. Moving forward, DCTV would like to add coverage of more community events, government meetings, informational recaps of meetings, community athletic events, and, community athletic events, informational updates on Dartmouth Elementary and Middle Schools, state and local candidate forums, and increased coverage of UMass Dartmouth speakers, events, and athletics. This year, we have started a bigger partnership with the Dartmouth High School Media Program and are starting to have more students involved in our productions. and are starting to have more students involved in our productions. We continue to cable cast all the media programs, shows, on our educational channel 9. We would also like to offer a high-definition channel, along with closed captioning for all of our programs going forward. I would like to end with two stories we have recently received about our programming. The first was the coverage of the Dartmouth High School versus Bishop Thang football game a few weeks ago. After this game, we received a handwritten note. I haven't received a handwritten note in, I don't know how long, but from the Bishop Thang Football's head coach's parents, who currently reside in North Carolina. In the note, Mr. Golden, it was his name, said, and I quote, "The livestream transmission was outstanding, the best I have ever seen for that type of broadcast." They also expressed their deep gratitude for our coverage as they don't normally get a chance to see their son coach a game. The second story is from a local politician. I don't want to mention the person's name because I'm not trying to influence a vote, but the candidate said they were out knocking on doors and noticed a sign for their opponent on the front lawn. They decided, you know what, we're going to go knock on the door anyway. So he went and knocked on the door. He introduced himself, and he asked them to reconsider their vote and vote for them. They said they would look into it. Well, the next day, that candidate received a phone call from the resident. The resident said to him, "We went back, we watched DCTV, Dartmouth Week, and WBSM's candidate forum. And we can tell you that we've pulled the sign for your opponent off of our lawn, and we are now voting for you." So that made us very happy. I mean, not so much for the other candidate, but for us, it showed that... These two stories represent exactly why we do what we do in Peg Access. Every day, we want to record, livestream, and create programs that everyone, not only in Dartmouth, can enjoy and keep them informed. Parents, grandparents, and family who cannot attend their family members' music, athletic, and/or special events can watch them at their convenience and safety of their homes. Just as important, the community can be well-informed on town projects, issues, as well as hear directly from candidates running for elected office. In my 27 years here at DCTV, I am proud to say that we have always tried our hardest to provide the best quality and unbiased coverage of every show or event we create and cover. I would like to thank everyone who has attended tonight in support of DCTV, and we encourage you to stand up this evening and let us know how we have served the community over the past years. I would also like to say thank you to the DCTV staff, Mike Maniz, Daniel Maderas, Chad Amaral, our part-time staff, as well as our Dartmouth High School interns, who some of them are here with Mr. Perotti, for helping us create this high-quality and professional videos. After this meeting, I welcome your comments on how we can be better serve the community. Please reach out to me at thestudio@508-984-1359, or my email address is pchass at town.dartmouth.m-a.us. Once again, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing your comments.
Peter, it wasn't that long ago that you replaced an icon in town. And what you've managed to do in doing it as a second and third in command in 27 years has been remarkable. Your ability to cooperate and your technical ability and the massive amounts of production you put out is fantastic. And you and your crew has been such an asset to our town, and thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we move on, I should just introduce the town's attorney. Bill August is in attendance also, and so he will be guiding us through this process in the future. I don't know if you're good. That's it? Thank you.
We will now open up any comment, open up the public comments now. Try to keep it under two to three minutes if you can, but anybody who wants to be brave enough to step up first, please go right ahead. We're talking about public comments in favor.
My name is Robert Perotti. I'm actually a town resident, 60 Bakerville Row here in Dartmouth. Good evening. I am the lead teacher for the new Business Innovation and Technology Department at Dartmouth High School. I am also the director for the Dartmouth High School TV Media Program. We come to you tonight to give a brief overview of how the Dartmouth Community Television Station and its staff has greatly impacted both our program and our students. When I began at the high school in 2017, the media program had little to no working video equipment. We basically had an empty space for which to mold. The studio equipment that we did have was highly outdated as it was original to the building. I was unsure as to what programming we could produce at the time. DCTV quickly stepped up to the plate and offered their facilities to help myself and students create a monthly news/magazine-type program about the high school. My students would write their scripts at the school and then would take a monthly field trip to the DCTV studios to film their parts. The students would return to the school, always bragging about how much fun they had working in DCTV's well-equipped facilities. Whether it was using the teleprompter, working the audio mixer, operating the cameras, or directing the entire show, it was truly a valuable experience for my students. We would edit the show together at the high school, and then it would not only be played during lunch at the school, but also air on DCTV's Educational Access Channel, Channel 9. It was a huge success in that first year. Shortly after, the high school was able to purchase some basic studio equipment, but the assistance from DCTV did not stop there. I would and still often consult with now Station Director Peter Chase as to our studio purchases. I'm always calling him on the phone and asking him what we should get and his expertise in the matter. We both agreed that students should be learning with the latest technology and tools that are used in the professional field. Peter, as well as then Educational Access Channel Director Michael Fernandez, would often come down to the high school to help with the equipment setup and usage. With their help, we were able to create a basic operational TV studio at the high school. Our production quality wasn't the best, but I knew with their assistance, we could improve. Although we no longer made monthly field trips to DCTV, they still opened their doors to our seniors in a student internship program. They would take, at the time, one student per semester and work with them on various projects. As of 2019, we had a steady production program, complete with our monthly news video and a steady intern program. Then after that year in 2020, COVID hit. Everything came to a standstill. DCTV once again helped with virtual programs such as graduation, which Peter already talked about earlier. It was a huge undertaking for the class of 2020. When most schools nationwide had a graduation video with just photos of the students, both DHSTV Media and DCTV were able to bring graduating students and their families into the high school auditorium one at a time to be filmed officially accepting their diplomas in front of their families. A grueling and tedious schedule would have been frowned upon by most cable access stations. DCTV made it work, and to this day, that graduation remains one of our most-view productions on our YouTube channel. Fast forward to today. The high school studios have upgraded many times over to now include many state-of-the-art technologies such as what is now at DCTV. We currently have teleprompters, remote camera systems, video wall sets, 4K multi-view monitor control rooms, high-speed editing workstations, and even a Hollywood-style camera crane system, always a favorite among most of my students. You would think we would no longer need the assistance of DCTV, but that statement couldn't be farther from the truth. Our partnership has not only grown, but has become one that is fluid and productive on many levels. My student interns now number eight per semester. This year, we have a steady crew of two students at each and every DCTV production. DCTV provides their production truck for many events in which the students are fully trained to operate. Last year alone, we covered a list of events at the high school. Pep rally in the fall, both drama theater productions, one in the fall and one in the spring. The Dartmouth High School TED Talks event in the winter, the Dartmouth's finest event in the spring, and a truly groundbreaking event at the stadium last May. A seven-hour livestream production of the Dartmouth-hosted Special Olympics competition for 10 out-of-district school systems, which involved a student crew of 15 students operating four cameras at three reporting stations, as well as running the DCTV production truck all on their own. We provided a great service for those school systems and parents who could not make the event to simply tune in live on our channel and watch their children compete. Last year, we ended with a cosponsored banquet in which we awarded our graduating seniors. This year, we are planning an awards film festival that will include both high school and middle school students. Currently at the high school, we are producing six regularly-produced programs, as well as many shorter productions such as public service announcements, all of which air on DCTV's Channel 9. Our students are also graduating and attending higher education institutions such as Emerson College, Bridgewater State University, Rhode Island College, and more. One former Dartmouth High graduate and former DCTV intern, who is now a sophomore at Emerson College, has recently secured a position working in the Harvard ESPN Sports Media Program as a sophomore. After speaking with him recently, he said, "Mr. Perotti, everything I learned in Dartmouth and working with DCTV has given me the skills to not only succeed in college, but put me ahead of my peers." In closing, I can't picture our program without DCTV. They have always been there for us, from our simple beginnings to now a thriving partnership. It's a marriage that not only benefits our students, but benefits the community with the many great programs we are producing together as one. We are one team. We are one crew. We are one Dartmouth. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing your crew. No homework tonight.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Rose, and I'm a board member, and I have been a board member for eight years. Thank you. That was very good. So I didn't even think we needed anything after that, but that was very good. Thank you. I'm just here to show my support for DCTV. And what I did is, I think they're an asset to the community. And when I heard about this hearing, what I did was, I went in my immediate neighborhood, my community, and I went on Friday and Sunday. Saturday, it rained. So I went to everybody, and I asked if they did watch DCTV. And almost everybody told me that they did. About two people said they didn't. When they told me what they watched, I mean, I asked them what they watched especially. And most of them watched the sports events, and most of them watched the local meetings with all the different issues. And for some of these people, they don't get the newspaper. A lot of people don't get newspaper anymore, so they don't really know what's going on unless you go to the doctors and get the paper there. So they don't really know what's going on. So they really appreciate having DCTV. One of the projects that I was involved on was Voices of Women. I was involved with Gail Forts on that program. And we did several. And one of the, well, a few that we did, but we did one on sexual assaults, and we did one on domestic violence, and we also did one on mental health. And after we did, it was a panelist. And after we did these sessions, we got a lot of calls from people asking us where to go for help. So to me, that was well worth it. So as a board member, and Peter, thank you, and the staff, thank you for all that they do in support of this contract for our DCTV community. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else?
How many minutes do I have?
Three minutes.
I want to congratulate Peter, who I've worked with. First of all, I'm Jim Thompson. I've been a board member forever and broadcasting athletics for Dartmouth High School for nearly 25 years. I'm so proud of you, our humble beginnings, and you coming in and replacing, as Dave said, a legend. That was a tremendous presentation. Congratulations. You really did great. Board members, Mr. Perotti, that was great. I'll just give you one quick story. We've been to the Garden, whatever they call it now, the Fleet Center. We've been to Craft Stadium, whatever they call that. No one covers athletics like we do. But I think our greatest story was, we're covering the Dartmouth High School Super Bowl. At CBS, it was a Saturday afternoon, and CBS is doing a Sunday game, the Packers versus the Patriots. And Peter, I think you may remember this. So we're set up at 1:00, and this producer and director of CBS Sports comes in and says, "What are you guys doing? Where do you get this equipment? Isn't Nessun doing the game?" I go, "Yeah, Nessun's doing it, but so are we." And he goes, "Dartmouth?" I go, "Yeah." "All this equipment?" "Yes." "Do you mind if we sit in?" I said, "Sure." So the guy sat there, the two guys, director and the producer. And at halftime, they said, "Would you mind coming over to the studio? We're getting ready for tomorrow's game." And I said, "Sure." So a couple of us went over. And the guy put his arm around me and said, "You guys are unbelievable. How many people in the town?" I said, "I don't know, 25, 30,000." He goes, "Your equipment and your professionalism," obviously not for me, but for Peter and his crew. Imagine, a big network like that, looking at a little town like us, and these guys travel in every sport for 52 weeks a year, and patted us on the back. You guys are a great community service. And I think that's, of all the things I've done in 25 years, Super Bowl championships, when the girls won the state championship, perhaps the greatest game I ever broadcast, and where we've come from. First, we started with boys' sports. Then all of a sudden, Peter and I got together one time. We said, "How about the girls?" Now we do everything. We do field hockey. We do boys' hockey. We do boys' football, girls' basketball, boys' basketball. No one, and Peter will tell you, when we go to a state championship game or just a regular game, we'll go up there and they'll say, "Who are you guys?" And we'll say, "Well, we're Dartmouth Community Media." And we'll be playing Bridgewater Rannam. "How about you guys?" "We don't do it." "How about Stang? Do you do it?" "How about Taunton? Do you do it?" No one does it like we do it. I can only speak for athletics, but with Cindy, Mr. Perotti, I agree with them all. It's a great service to the town, and I'm very proud for the last 20-something years to be proud of it. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Hi, I'm Ian Flynn. I am 511 Clark's Row, Bristol, Rhode Island. I'm the director of music for Dartmouth Public Schools. Just wanted to say a couple of comments tonight. You know, what we do with the music department is not a mistake. And what I'll say by that is, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that happen, and a lot of the things that we depend on come from what happens with DCTV and Peter Chase and his crew. You know, we do concerts at the school. The ability to do live production with high-quality audio, it's not just for the video, like he said, it's in the live performance. So when you attend one of these events, it's not just me with a microphone and one speaker. It's a full audio production. And we can do large-format concerts in the gym with all of our ensembles simultaneously, and you can hear the chorus sing. And that's not easy to do even for a top-end professional. So they produce concerts at such a high level that it'd be the same thing that we would have to do to hire out somebody, a professional organization, for thousands and thousands of dollars to do that. We can do every single concert. So that's super valuable for us. You know, the fact that it's multi-camera, so when people watch the events, they can see their children. It's not just an overview shot of the concerts. It's like a true production that you'd see with maybe the Boston Symphony or an ensemble like that. And then the reality is the behind-the-scenes production. You know, we're working hand-in-hand with them to make these concerts happen. It's phone calls in advance, making sure that they know, like, exactly what's happening in the concert, what the songs are, they got the playlists. I mean, it's a week or two of advanced notice on every single little detail with the concerts. So that's so important. Obviously, during the pandemic, our marching programs that we have only survived because of DCTV. You know, the ability to do live video and then to be able to broadcast that is a huge deal. We actually did a live event that was a live broadcast Bands of America. And we did it, like, the students performed. It was beamed over to Indianapolis to their production studio, and then live broadcast all around the world. So we were able to do that live in person. And the other schools that were doing that were doing it at major stadiums, like at the Colts Stadium. And we were able to do it right here in our own hometown stadium, which is pretty unique. And then the other thing is, like, a good example of how DCTV goes above and beyond is last year, we had one of our staff members get sick. He was actually our in-person audio designer. And I went to Peter and said, "We need help. We need help with the sound design. We need backup in case for technical issues for the rest of indoor season." We had about four seasons, four weeks left in the season, and, you know, we're going to World Championships. This is a big deal. We can't have a glitch at the last moment. So he even traveled out with us to World Championships. And the really cool thing about it was, he came out and it was like, "Hey, the router went down at 6:00 AM, and we go to Walmart." And he reprograms the router, and the students have a great performance. But in between all that, he's taking photo and video and documenting the experience so that the community can see that back here. So what we do when we go out on the road, most people don't see that. It's just like, oh, they won a championship, or whatever that is. And it's so valuable to be able to present to the community what we do live, and it was great having them out there with us. So, I mean, just the resources for us are invaluable, you know? So that's all I can say from the music department. I mean, I could go on and on, just like... I mean, I could go on and on, just like Mr. Prati did, but, you know, the reality is, what you see as a community is all because of what DCTV does for us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
My name is Ryan Merrill. I'm the Director of Strategic Communications and Media Relations at UMass Dartmouth, and I'm honored to be here today to relay the university's, as well as my own gratitude, to Peter and his team. They've helped us a lot. Closer to the mic, sorry.
Pull it towards you.
Yep, got you.
Thank you.
They've helped us accomplish a lot of really important projects, especially as part of our Town Gown Collaboration. We've worked closely over the years to, you know, find ways to bring athletics, prominent speakers and events to the residents of Dartmouth through DCTV, and I want to commend the staff. They've been great to work with, very helpful, and I'm impressed about how much they accomplish, and I'm learning more tonight, which is even, you know, which is really good. So the ability to share the enriching happenings at the university with residents of the town, especially those not able to make the trip to campus, is a great benefit to us, and I believe to the town as well. I strongly endorse, you know, everything that they do, and I think it's really important for, you know, the residents inside and outside of Ring Road, so thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, boy. Now we're in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. McGinnis. I'm John Nunes, Precinct 633 Homer Street, North Dartmouth. I am the chairman of the Dartmouth School Committee and also a member of the Dartmouth School Music Association, apparent boosters, but the comments I have here tonight are mine and mine alone, and do not represent my board or the music association. I just want to thank Peter for everything that he's done for both the school department and also the music association. I mean, when you put the TV on Channel Nine or Channel 18, any different time of the day or night, you're going to see a school event going on on Channel Nine, you're going to see an athletic event, a retro concert from the 1990s, which is really great, because now you sit, you know, I sit there and I look at it and I go, "Okay, gee, who's this one? Who's that one?" That type of deal, you get a chance to see them, who is there. Peter's always available. I've texted Peter at nine o'clock on a Saturday night, when all of a sudden, you know, the cable freezes, you know, the program freezes, and, you know, it's 10 or 15, 20 minutes, and it's still frozen, and I'll text him and say, "Hey, you know, it's frozen," and he'll text me back, "Yep," and I'll work on it, and from home, he's working on it, or wherever he is, he's working on it to get it fixed, type of deal. Mr. Flynn talked about him being in Dayton, you know, with the indoor show this past fall, this past spring, I should say, but last fall, when we came back from New Jersey after having won our fifth championship, you know, 10 o'clock on a Sunday night, there's Peter with the camera, taking pictures of the kids coming off the bus in a celebration that the parents had put together. It's appreciated, and it's, you know, when everyone else has talked about. We are the envy of a lot of towns, because when you watch them, it's not there, and it's grateful and very nice, and it's, you know, Peter talks about other communities that do tape events. I've watched the Nubefah Dartmouth Girls Soccer Team and a baseball game from Fall River, from Durfee, when our boys played at Durfee, but it is grateful and nice to have those available and for us to watch, so I commend him and thank him for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else? This guy knows who he's talking about.
Jonathan Galishaw, 27 Chantilly Court, Seacoak, Massachusetts. But I work here in the town at 8 Busch Street, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, as the Director of Technology. I just wanted to come tonight to offer my support for DCTV and also for their relationship with Comcast. DCTV is, you have to, I've been in and around cable access for over 30 years, ever since 1984, Continental Cable back in Brockton, Massachusetts, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm dating myself, yes, but you truly have a gem here. You have a gem in DCTV. The production is network-worthy, the content is amazing. It's a relationship that I've had with Cindy and also with Peter since I arrived over almost a decade ago, and we've really had a lot of things, we've done a lot of work together. One of those things we've done is lit up the, or continued to use the instruction, I'm sorry, the institutional network, the INET, I call it the instructional network, but it's a backbone of our infrastructure. It also has a very good service. It connects our cameras to the police department. Through that, the police department and dispatch has access to our cameras, so they are able to monitor that and have a good view of what we do, in case of emergency. So I just wanted to offer my support for that, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Good job. I also have some resounding, wonderful comments from, Rob Almy is the Chair of the Department of Public Works, utter support, complete support, all our meetings we have. Also from Gail Forts from the YWCA wrote us a wonderful letter in support, Kyle Costa of the Dartmouth Police Department, and Kevin Mello, the Planning Board Chair. All people gave resounding, positive reviews, just like we're handing, and so thank you for all those comments. Anybody else? Yeah, we, those were the positive for sure. Anybody want to stand up in this crowd and talk about a negative comment about DCTV?
I dare you.
It's a cable encompassment.
Everybody's entitled their opinion. Okay.
So now we close the hearing?
Yep, we're going to, emotion?
I make a motion that we-
Before we close it, I just, I'm hopeful that the gentleman from Comcast takes the information that he hears tonight from DCTV. I think what you've heard, and the fact that we have such a quality program in Dartmouth, Peter Chase, who inherited the program, which was on its way, and in COVID, just expanded it seemingly overnight. We have a program in Dartmouth that not only is Dartmouth proud of, but we should be a model for other communities, and I would feel that Comcast would want nothing more than to expand and support the Dartmouth community television. Thank you.
There's more comments to come from us, so.
Could you have to close?
I have to close the hearing, so I make a motion that we close the hearing.
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding the closing hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. This hearing is closed. Okay. Mr. McDonald?
Yep, so as far as, as far as what we've heard, I want to make, I want to stress to our attorney to make sure that the language is in there, and also stress to Comcast that the continuation of funding of DCTV through the cable fees at 5% is tantamount important. These fees, as many of us, when we see our bill, just are absolutely, you know, fiberglass to that, all the access fees, the federal fees and all that that comes about, but the more important one for us as a community is that 5% that goes to DCTV. There are many, many, many people in this town. We, sometimes we joke about it when we say that we have millions of people, of viewers, but, you know, we have a lot of viewers that watch this board, that watch other boards and see how the town government works, but also they watch what goes on in the schools, and also for our seniors, the importance of seeing their peers throughout the years doing cooking programs, doing yoga programs, doing Tai Chi, doing things that they cannot get out to do is important to them. So we must maintain the ability to reach our residents at home all the time. With that, also maintaining the infrastructure that connects our buildings is extremely important, that those, that infrastructure needs to be reviewed and looked at to see how Comcast can make, to give the town its bang for the buck, for all intents and purposes. You need to take a look at the equipment and the lines of delivery to make sure that the functionality of those cable lines are as up-to-date as possible, so that there is no degrading of the broadcast or the failure along the lines. It's important for our police to see what goes on in the schools, especially in now, you know, in the days of ages, if, God forbid, if they ever have at any type of an event, the police need to see the, have their eyes on what goes on there, and that's important, that's part of that. So there is a lot involved here. One of the things that, you know, people are going to inherently complain about pricing, you know, and that's just normal, you know, but I think what is important is that it's the delivery of services and the delivery of how quickly Comcast can respond to outages, how quickly Comcast can respond to the degradation of any kind of a signal if something happens. If there's, if there's an area in town that constantly is out, you know, why? You know, what additional equipment does Comcast need to provide to make sure that that doesn't happen again? The internet is, has become more valuable to everyone over the last 10 years. I mean, there, I don't think there isn't a person in this town that doesn't use some form of the internet for transaction businesses, for ordering equipment, of ordering food, anything, and I think that's important, that Comcast make the effort to make sure that their infrastructure and our infrastructure is at top-notch at all times. Those are the two key components that I'm more interested in, you know, and it's, I've said enough. You know where I stand.
Thank you.
I'll just mention a few things. Peter, you had some big shoes to fill with Dr. Marlin, and you more than were up to it. Congratulations on what you've accomplished, you and your staff. I'm sure you can't do it alone. So I remember in 2014, Dr. Marlin gave me a call, and she said, "Stanley, we're looking to do some TV programs." And I was probably the last person in the world that wanted to host a TV program, even though I usually don't find any, I don't, don't take it, I always take advantage of every opportunity to talk, so. So in 2014, your town came about, and I was the host, and I've had some wonderful times over the years interviewing dear friend, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Is that a top-rated show?
Sure is, yeah. I can tell you that right now. Anyway, it's just, it's a small thing, but it's just what we've, what we do and what cable TV, DCTV has done for this town. I can tell you numerous times that I'll be in a supermarket, and some lady or gentleman will come up to me, "We watched you last night, but you know, you should have talked more about this or that," but we always get, and I'm sure we, obviously, we all get that same interreaction with citizens, and to be honest with you, I very rarely, if any, ever get anything negative. So again, Peter, love you, love what you guys do, just keep up what you're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Wood, anything?
I can only respond with what everyone else is saying, and I truly believe what we have in Dartmouth is a model for other communities, and we've done it by not having the biggest budget, but having people who are committed to the process of putting together a quality program and finding ways to make it happen. And the pivot that happened during COVID, and DCTV was able to support the town in creating these online Zoom meetings, which prior to March 13, 2020, I had no idea what a Zoom meeting was, and our world changed. And although it was very difficult, there were some positives that have come out of that pandemic and that experience, and the access to quality news, local news, and programs were so helpful to, for families who could not attend those sports, because I heard a lot about it, could not go to their child's game, but they could watch it live, even if they were watching it from their phone in the parking lot. And that was, those were very difficult days, and I think the work of DCTV, including the work that they did on that graduation of the class of 2020, was phenomenal. And I happened to retire, be a COVID retirement, and they were wonderful, and came up and surprised me with a video that they created with, from my many years in the school department, and it was really wonderful, what they had done.
Here, here. Mr. Gracie, anything?
Just a couple of words, because people have said enough, that I think that this DCTV is a jewel for our community, a shiny jewel. It's be missed, sorely missed if it wasn't here, and Peter and his entire crew are excellent at what they do, and they do a great job, and it's a benefit to all of us.
Thank you. I do look forward to the ongoing negotiation, the final discussions we can have once we go along, because we have some work to do here for sure, but listening to these testimonials, it's quite emotional to listen to, because you consider the scope of all the work we do, be it sports or government, or it's amazing, and the passion of people just to show up here, to say what they had to say in support of what we do here. It's amazing. It's just amazing, and it's a proud, proud moment for our town. In 10 years doing, look how far we've come. So it's awesome. So any comments?
Just before, there was just two things that just popped in my mind, sometimes it works this way. One of the things that I like to see Comcast look in their pricing structure, I know we don't have that much of a discussion about it, but I would like to see some type of a better discount for, you know, seniors, household, senior households, specifically mostly for cable and internet. I think it's very important that we try to reach, you know, our seniors who are unable to get out most of the time, because this could be their only access to the outside world, but also, I would also like to see some type of an effort made on, made upon by Comcast to reach out to those families of lower income to make sure that their kids have the ability to get access to the educational process of the internet. I think that's very important, too, because not only does that help them, it also helps our schools, and getting these kids to be a little bit more rounder and education-wise, and I think that's very important, that that needs to be addressed. Maybe it's a little bit more to get, you know, Comcast a bigger push, maybe a little bit more to get the marketing people to do it, because I know you have the programs, but I think you need to push that a little bit better, especially, I mean, Dartmouth, you know, by all intents and purposes, Dartmouth is stereotyped as a rich community. We're not. We are across the board, no matter where we are. We have, we have the richest of the richest, and we have the poorest of the poorest. So we're pretty much right across the spectrum. There's many families in this town that are struggling to get the access for the kids to the education. I think that's very important, and I think you guys need to step up and at least show, tell people that you have this, this type of a program, so.
Thank you. Comments from Patrick from Comcast, our attorney, Mr. Attorney August, anything you want to say? Please step up.
I'll just be very brief. I've been Bill August, attorney concentrating and representing municipalities in cable licensing and regulation and some related telecom and utility matters, and worked with the town way back when, 20 years ago, I think, when we first met with Mike Gagny- way back when, 20 years ago, I think, when we first met with Mike Gagny, a prior manager, and got Dartmouth Community TV going. So I know some of the history, but to be very brief, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their eloquence and insight into the importance of programming, local programming, information that comes out of a community studio. You said it, stated it with gravity and eloquence, and it reminds me why I have always found this area of law to be very important and interesting. So I thank you for your words tonight, and I'll be going into the renewal reminded of your appreciation of that and the broad, similar statements and sentiments coming from the public here tonight. The pandemic really shined a light on the importance of it, of local information. You know, in this day and age, with local newspapers dwindling and becoming conglomerates and not having a lot of town-specific information, during the pandemic, we realized that local information and local programming wasn't just important, but it was an essential service. So I think we're all aware of that now more than ever. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate you being here. Any comments from Comcast?
Patrick Schurins again for Comcast. I just wanted to, again, thank the board, members of the community, and Peter for your presentation today. It's very important, I'm looking forward to rolling up our sleeves and getting a good deal done.
Amen to that.
Great, thank you. Shove in your pencil.
Again, thank you all. The comments of the public are greatly appreciated. I'd like to particularly thank Dartmouth Community Media and Peter Chase and Comcast for their assistance in the ongoing license renewal proceedings, and we look forward to further discussions and the final product.
And comments are still, can still be emailed to us.
Right.
At selectboard@dartmouth.town.us.
Wonderful. Which will be up on, which will be up on DCTV. Go right ahead.
Sure.
I'm not great on procedures, I'll listen to anything you say.
Even though the hearing has closed, under the Cable Act, the renewal section specifically contemplates that this phase we're in of ascertaining needs, that's ongoing. So the sending in comments is contemplated and consistent with the framework, even though one particular hearing is closed. Okay.
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
The hearing has been closed. We have any other comments or questions from anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? This meeting is adjourned.
Good turn.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.